I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
And, Madam Mayor, we have a quorum, and Councilmember wouldn't inform me that she would not be here tonight.
Any changes to the minutes, the council minutes of November 14th, or special council minutes of November 21, as well as study session notes of November 21? Hearing none, they are approved as presented. I don't believe I have any proclamations tonight. Is anybody else? Nope. Okay, let's move right on to citizens' right to speak, and I do have two people signed up, starting with Robert Vance, and then followed by Vicki Addison. Robert, do you want to come up? Please come to the microphone and give us your name, spelling your last name, and your address, please.
My name is Robert Vance. I own the property at 37, 31, 37, 47, Yukon Court. The question I have is, if this proposal goes through, will they widen Yukon Court? Will it go all the way to the end to 32nd and 36th Street? Is that supposed to be a delivery entrance for a store, whatever is built on Wadsworth?
Madam Mayor, that pertains to Agenda Item Number Two, but I think what we should do is just make sure the applicant is here, and just ask that they address that when they make their presentation. Coming up on the agenda, we'll have the applicant address that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. The answer to that was that we will address it under Item Number Two, for anybody who's listening. Vicki Addison?
Vicki Addison, OTTO SON, 4210 Brentwood Street. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Wheat Ridge Garden Tour. Tonight, Christine Frazier from Wheat Ridge Gardeners was going to join me, but the times got mixed up. I don't know if you're aware of Wheat Ridge Gardeners. It's a closed Facebook page with 364 members, a very impressive group. I'm here in support of Counselor Duran's request for funds for a banner across 38th Avenue to promote the 2017 Wheat Ridge Garden Tour, which will take place on Saturday, July the 8th. Here are some facts about the tour. The first garden tour was held in 2011. 2016 was the sixth garden tour. Over those six years, 58 residential and public gardens have been showcased. 225 people attend the garden tour annually. The garden tour attracts attendees from the Denver metro area as well as the Front Range. Registered attendees have included the communities of Arvada, Aurora, Broomfield, Denver, Evergreen, Golden, Lafayette, Littleton, Lone Tree, Longmont, Loveland, and Westminster. The garden tour has strong support from the business community. Thirty businesses annually buy advertising in support of the tour. Fifteen businesses in 2016 donated items for the first silent auction. Three Wheat Ridge businesses are contracted to provide services annually. Four sponsors in 2016 contributed a total of $950 toward the tour. Pietrus Pizzeria sponsors the lunch stop, probably a value of about $1,500. Sixty volunteers staffed the tour, including Ann Brinkman and Gay Porter Danilien, who guide the bike tour for the third time this year. The garden tour has donated more than $7,600 to Wheat Ridge charities. As a matter of fact, $7,670. Nine donations have been made to eight Wheat Ridge charities, including the Cultural Commission, 2020 Local Works, Wheat Ridge High School instrumental music boosters, Feed the Future, Family Tree, the Community Foundation's Curtis Gilmore lifelong learning scholarship, Collier's Hospice at Lutheran Medical Center, and veterans at the Jefferson Center for Mental Health. 2016 was my fifth year helping with the tour, and I have to tell you, the funnest part for me is working with the gardeners. It's truly an honor to support and showcase their hard work and creativity. What we've learned is every garden is someone's personal paradise, and every garden has a story to tell. In 2016, we gave names to the gardens, such as Kevin's Showplace for Diane and Kevin Robb's Statue Garden, Piper at the Gates of Dawn for John Mew's 1960s Pink Floyd Garden. Another garden that sticks out was Lou Felberg's Postman's Half-Century Garden. Lou has been gardening for 56 years in the same location. The tour, thank you, was honored to contribute $250 toward updating Lou's sprinkler system with an automatic timer. In summary, the goal of the tour is to be something the city of Wheat Ridge can be proud of. We do our best to ensure that the highest standards are met, that the tour is safe for all participants, that everyone attends learns something new about gardening, and has an enjoyable day. And thank you for considering helping the tour become even more successful with the addition of an advertising banner hanging somewhere in the ridge at 38.
Thank you, Vicki. I don't believe I have anyone else signed up as citizens to speak. I believe we can just go right on. Any changes in the agenda tonight? Let's go on then, starting with the consent agenda. Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda for this evening. Item A, motion to ratify the mayoral reappointment of Kelly Brooks to District Four of the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, DBA Renewal Wheat Ridge, term to expire November 30, 2021. B, Resolution Number 51-2016, amending the fiscal year 2016 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $44,930 for the replacement of a mechanical street sweeper. And C, Resolution Number 52-2016, amending the fiscal year 2016 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $26,448 for the replacement of a public works department vehicle. Is a motion ordered?
Madam Mayor? May I make a motion to remove Item A and vote on that separately than the rest of the consent agenda?
So we will be voting on Item?
Second.
Madam Mayor, that doesn't require a motion. You can just ask to pull it and?
Thank you, okay. Then I'm asking to pull Item A from the consent agenda.
I move to approve consent agenda items B and C.
Second. I need a second on that. Do we get one already?
Tim?
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Go ahead and cast your votes then on that.
Motion carries seven to zero.
And then, Item A?
I move to ratify the mayoral reappointment of Kelly Brooks to District Four of the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, doing business as Renewal Wheat Ridge, term to expire November 30, 2021.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Hoppy. Discussion on that one?
And the second was?
Hoppy. Okay, I seconded this motion because it indirectly addresses an issue that I would like us to visit in the next year, and that is our procedures in general for appointments. I would like us to take that up in study session and/or the retreat coming up, as far as the procedures that we follow and the vetting of candidates. It seems to me it all kind of takes place in a dark room somewhere. And I'm not saying anyone particularly is taking advantage, and I'm not complaining per se, but I think we need to perhaps get a little more transparency on how appointments take place, and get them publicized a little better, and a little more transparency to take place. Thank you.
Anyone else want to add anything to that? I think, yeah, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I think we could certainly talk about this at a later date, but this is a mayoral appointment. I think we should go ahead and go through with this.
I believe that the discussion was just a comment versus a dispute at this point. All right, any other discussion? Then please go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion carries four to three, with Councilmembers Matthew, Fitzgerald, and Duran voting no.
Yes, that up. So the ratification is not approved?
No, four to three.
Oh, all right, got it. All right, okay. You know, before all this started, there's something. Did you do something? Yeah. I want to draw attention to Item 2B. That was a $75,000 grant, and I don't, I want to thank staff for getting that grant. That is an important grant from the Regional Air Quality Control Board, and to our city to help us purchase a sweet street sweeper, and a sweet streeper too, probably, but that's all I wanted to say about that, was it. Thank you for doing a good job on getting our city $75,000. Item Number Two, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Okay, Resolution 53-2016, a resolution approving a major subdivision plat with right-of-way vacation for property zoned mixed-use commercial, MUC, and located at the southwest corner of West 38th Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard. The case number was WS-16-03. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a major subdivision plat for property zoned mixed-use commercial and located on the west side of Wadsworth Boulevard between 35th and 38th Avenue. The purpose of the request is to establish new lot lines to vacate dedicated right-of-way, and to establish appropriate easements to enable mixed-use development of the entire
This is a public hearing, and I need an ordinance number on this? Clerk? Janelle, I need an ordinance number.
I'm sorry. There, what are you asking me for?
I need an ordinance number on Item Number Two.
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution with a public hearing, no ordinance.
Oh, I missed that. I picked it up as an ordinance. That's okay, we still have to open it as a public meeting. Meeting is open, and I'd like to swear on anybody who will be speaking, will any of our applicants be speaking? Please stand, raise your right hand. Okay. Do you swear to affirm or tell the whole truth as you understand it in this matter? Just answer, "I do." Thank you. You can stand now. Sit down now. All right. Staff report.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Lauren McLachlan, I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, and presenting the case tonight, which, as Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned, is an approval of a major subdivision. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So we'll begin here quickly with an aerial. I know this is a property that is pretty familiar to most people here, but it is on the west side of Wadsworth, north of, to the top of the screen, 38th Avenue there on the top of the screen. The site's just over 14 acres in size, and the property, as most of us know, has been vacant since 2010, which is when the go-forward dealership closed, which occupied the northern portion of the building above 36th Avenue, where you see some of those building footprints. The southern half of the property is undeveloped land. An expansion of the dealership had been approved in 2003, but that never moved forward. At that time is when West 36th Avenue had been dedicated. That's this curvilinear street here that bisects the property. It was dedicated in anticipation of a car dealership expansion. That expansion never happened. 36th Avenue doesn't look like a street today. It was never built as a street, just dedicated. This is an excerpt of the zoning map. That light blue color that shades the subject property stands for mixed-use commercial. It's a zone district which is generally located on a major commercial corridor such as Wadsworth, and it allows for a really wide range of uses. You can see from this sort of patchwork quilt that there is a wide variety of other zone districts in the area. Generally speaking, there are commercial uses to the north and northeast. There's two shopping centers across 38th Avenue. The darker blue color is another mixed-use zone district, and then it becomes pretty varied in terms of zoning and uses, but generally to the south and west are a lot of multifamily uses, condos and apartments. It's a hard site to photograph because it's so large, so we'll just look at this one aerial borrowed from Google. We're turned around now, so we're looking south, but this image helps to illustrate the frontages that surround the property. There are four street frontages. 38th Avenue, as I mentioned, on the north here, Wadsworth, 35th, and what you can see pretty clearly in this image is Yukon Court on the western side, which currently deadens into the site. That's important to note, in part because we'll answer the citizen question we got earlier about Yukon Court extending through the site to get a connection to 35th Avenue. You can also see, the site, I think, looks better maybe in this image than it does on the ground, but those buildings, the white buildings and this reddish one are all existing today, are vacant, and the entire site will be scraped to make way for a mixed-use redevelopment. The purpose of this application tonight, though, just as a reminder, is only the subdivision plat. That's one component of several applications that will be required before redevelopment. A plat is a technical document that essentially reconfigures the lot lines, vacates and dedicates right-of-way, and makes the land developable for future development. There are related applications in process and anticipated for the site. We have a concept plan in process right now, and site plans that we expect next year. With that, though, we'll look at the plat. The cover sheet, it's the first of four sheets. I know this is illegible, but it essentially is our standard declarations and signature blocks. The second sheet is showing existing conditions, and what I've done on this and the next couple is to highlight some of the features to hopefully make it a little bit more legible on this screen. Again, existing conditions, so existing lot lines shown in blue. There are four different lots, and there are multiple different owners. Shown in red is that West 36th Avenue right-of-way that, again, was dedicated in 2003, and really doesn't make sense to move forward with the proposed development. So this plat would vacate that right-of-way, and we'll talk about those criteria in a minute. This particular sheet removes all of the existing internal lot lines. It also removes existing easements. Those aren't highlighted, because there are several of them, but many of those easements, again, were there for a different development scenario that just doesn't make sense anymore. The next sheet includes the proposed conditions, and so, again, we've highlighted the proposed lot lines, tracks, and right-of-way dedication, which is shown in red there around the perimeter of the site. Whenever we get a subdivision application, we review the adjacent street frontages to see if they meet current standards, or if any improvements are needed. In this case, there's a few different improvements that are envisioned. There would be detached sidewalks on all four frontages, Yukon, 38th, Wads, and 35th Avenue. And so it's harder to see, but Yukon Court, again, to answer the previous question, is not being expanded in terms of the roadway, but there is a sliver of right-of-way being dedicated to accommodate detached sidewalk, likewise on 38th Avenue. As council is aware, we have a separate project going on where we're looking at the widening of Wadsworth, and we're still pretty early in that project, but far enough along that we think we know the widest possible footprint for that design. And so that potential footprint is being accommodated by the right-of-way dedication that you're seeing here in Wadsworth. It is a wider dedication, and sort of an irregular dedication, in part because our existing right-of-way is irregular, and in part because the potential future footprint of Wadsworth is wider at 38th Avenue. Understandably, that's a larger intersection, so it would have a bigger footprint than, say, a 35th to the south. The blue lines, as I mentioned, are those proposed lot lines, so there's five lots sort of here in a row, and two smaller ones. The outline here on the far western edge of the property is a tract. That's tract A. If you're familiar with the site, you know there's something that folks call a wetlands area. It's a drainage feature that was installed for the previous development and potential expansion that will remain and be upgraded and sort of put back into serviceable use, so that will be fully included in that tract A. We use tracks to denote an undevelopable, wouldn't ever have a building in it, for example. The fourth sheet of this plat set shows the easements, and so I've highlighted three different types of easements here. The blue identifies those drainage easements. So again, you see tract A is fully encumbered by drainage easement because of what will be in that area. Because of the size of the site, drainage will be split into two different areas. Part will drain to the west there, and part will drain sort of to the northeast here. This is proposed to be an underground drainage facility that would be below a parking area. The gray network of easements is the access and emergency easement areas, and so you can tell that essentially we'll have a grid network set up for vehicular access. There will be sidewalks along most, if not all of those, and they won't be public streets that go through the site, but they will function sort of like local streets. Some of these will be built as complete streets, where you have sidewalks and tree lawns on both sides. Again, sort of highlighting where Yukon Court currently deadends into the property, it would be extended to provide connectivity all the way down to 35th. Without that gridded internal street network, it really is a super block from 35th to 38th, so connectivity through and around the site was really important, and we memorialize those types of easements on this document. Utilities, sort of like a local street, will be permitted in those access easements, and the yellow shading that you see are additional locations for some dedicated wet and dry utilities. Because we're not a full-service city, and because the subdivision plat is a relatively early component of a development process, the applicant will be continuing to engage our utility providers as we move through, so you'll notice one of the potential conditions of approval is to continue that engagement and make any tweaks to these easements that may be necessary before we record the document. As I mentioned earlier, West 36th Avenue is proposed to be vacated. The image that you see in the bottom right corner overlays the proposed access easement grid with 36th Avenue, and you can see that they really serve two different development scenarios. In any situation when the city is giving up or vacating right-of-way, there are four criteria or considerations that are included in the zoning code, just to give extra consideration of giving up any right-of-way. And those four considerations are outlined here on this slide. Because the access easement essentially replaces 36th Avenue, there's no negative impact to existing or proposed development. No land is left without access, and we feel that the grid design really more furthers the city's goals in terms of connectivity and having appropriate infrastructure in place. Because the car dealership was never expanded, as I mentioned, the right-of-way was never constructed as a right-of-way, so there's no improvements in there that need to be accommodated by any easement or other consideration. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision with the right-of-way vacation. We send all applications on referral, and the utility providers, while we continue to work with them, they have indicated that they can serve the property. The plat application does comply with the subdivision regulations, which are found in Article Four of the zoning code. Vacation of West 36th Avenue is appropriate, given those four considerations that we just looked at, and Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on December 1st and recommend approval. The property's been posted for a two-week period before this hearing and before the Planning Commission hearing. We haven't received any objections or comments in writing. We've gotten a few inquiries, but nothing further in terms of public comment. And lastly, we are recommending three conditions of approval to continue that coordination with utility providers, to clarify one of the notes on that cover sheet, that sidewalks will be available for public use in addition to the vehicular travelways, and to require that the subdivision improvement agreement, which is the agreement that memorializes the developer's commitments to install public improvements, be recorded, be required prior to recrodation. So that concludes my presentation. Available for comments, and the applicant is also here if you have questions. Available for comments, and the applicant is also here if you have questions.
Mr. May? [inaudible] Is the one testifier just available?
Available. You have a question?
Yes.
Mr. May?
I'm assuming right now, we really don't have final plans yet. I mean, this is really just a zoning application, basically, and...
Not a zoning application.
Not zoning, but subdivision. I mean, we just don't know what the drainage is going to look like and all of that. Just a plat change.
Yes, yes. So the zoning is in place, and the subdivision is a typical sort of early-phase application to get the lot lines in place. We have preliminary drainage reports, but not final. We have not received the site plan details yet.
Will the public have a chance to address any issues when final site plans and designs are available?
The, yeah, site plans are reviewed administratively against the zoning code requirements, but it's all public record, and we'd be happy to look at those or provide those to the public. We actually have a new feature on our website that's an interactive active land use case map, so we populate that as we get the applications in.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. As it relates to the question that was posed under public comment, I was wondering if we could have that answered relative to the Yukon Court connection to the, to 35th, and how that relates to this development, and whether or not that might be a, what kind of access point that's going to be provided to this development, and how that's going to look.
So Yukon Court, as it exists today, is not going to be expanded to be a wider roadway. It'll be expanded to the south to connect to 35th Avenue, and the southern portion that's shaded here in gray won't be a public street, but it will function like a public street. So anybody on Yukon who's right now limited to get in and out only on 38th would have free movement to and through the site to increase their options, sort of get out to 35th or to Wadsworth or elsewhere. One of the other things I should mention is that we're looking at the possibility of putting a signal at Yukon Court and 38th Avenue. We're looking at how that relates to Wadsworth and Allison where there's already signals, but it could definitely help getting in and out of Yukon Court.
Okay.
That answer the question?
Yes. And then, as it relates to the right-of-way on Wadsworth, does this, does this plat affect our right-of-way as it relates to the Wadsworth EA? And how does that, you mentioned that at the very beginning of the presentation, but how does this plat affect that plan in any way, or does that match up with that, or how does that impact that?
Right. So we've completed a planning and environmental linkage study where we had a very conceptual design that has since changed as a part of the current environmental assessment. We would say that we're still only at maybe 3% to 10% drawings, but we've put a focus on this particular area to make sure that we get the footprint of the right-of-way dedication right. So we're confident that this dedicated area will accommodate the footprint of the widened Wadsworth. And we're working with sort of the best information we have as we go day-to-day. This project is likely to be going at a faster pace than what the widening of Wadsworth would be, so we're working very closely with CDOT, not only on what the future design would look like, but also what the opening day design of Wadsworth would look like to sort of minimize impact both to this development and to the roadway construction.
So I just want to make sure that we're not creating a situation where we have to come back and purchase additional right-of-way, or otherwise come back and have to replat the subdivision, or otherwise come back and deal with this again?
That is our objective, to not do that.
Okay.
We don't think we'll have to, based on this current dedication.
And then, you mentioned that the PEL is a very conceptual design as opposed to the EA? That doesn't...
The, the design that we did now two years ago, you know, was what we started with when we began working with the developer. Those designs have since advanced to the point where we think we have some certainty in terms of what's moving forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? I do have a, if I had a question, I had another public testimony. Dina, thank you, Lauren. We may be calling you back. But Dina, do you want to come forward? And I don't believe you had a chance to swear in.
No.
Come on, it's okay.
If anybody has talked...
Hi, Dina Svetlik, S-W-E-T-L-I-K, 3715 Newland. So here to speak on the Corners subdivision plat this evening. First, I want to say, I'm generally...
Mayor, would you want to stop her first and swear in?
Yeah. Do you swear or tell the whole truth, and just answer yes?
All the truth about my opinions here tonight. So first, I just want to say I'm very excited to see generally what's beginning to happen with new development projects in Wheat Ridge, the Corners, Kala Creek Crossing, Ward Road, et cetera. The comments here tonight, glad I was able to see the presentation, didn't know if I would be before I was able to speak. But many of my comments that I'm making tonight, I also made at the neighborhood meeting update held by the developers several months ago. So obviously, this, this property is one of a handful in Wheat Ridge of this size available for all new development. Any decisions on lots, blocks, and streets now will be in place for decades. Now is the time to make the right decisions in terms of the plat. This is a high-priority site and primary commercial quarter, as was referenced, in terms of the comprehensive plan. And with that, the development needs to plan for all modes. I hope that all internal streets being created are designed as such, as streets, and not as internal drives that we have seen so many times in poorer commercial developments of the past several decades. Detached sidewalks, tree lawns, and on-street parking on at least one side of the street should be required. The on-street parking can be counted towards parking requirements. And I know the presentation mentioned that most of the streets would have sidewalks. I hope that they all do. This is most critical, in my opinion, along 35th, providing parking for guests and for residents. The on-street parking on 35th will also help to reduce the speed of traffic on 35th, which was a concern of some of the members attending the last neighborhood meeting held by the developer. In the future, that parking lane could also be used for Uber slash driverless car pickup and drop-off as technology changes, staying out of the travel zone. So it could also be used for multipurpose in the future, or even for more roadway capacity if needed in the future. The plat must be completed correctly in order to accommodate these critical components for creating livable place. I'm sure sidewalks and tree lawns have been discussed, and they have, but probably not as much about the on-street parking. I ask council to seriously consider requiring on-street parking on key streets within the development at a minimum on 35th, and honestly, I think on Yukon Court would be very important as well, assuring the plat accommodates that. Thank you.
Can the applicant respond to any statements? Like the back of the building?
Robert Turner, Modern Properties, 981 South Park Drive, Littleton, Colorado. Couple of things we talked about, walkways. We talked about walkways and things of that nature, and I think at last count, we had somewhere around 7,000 or 8,000 lineal feet of walkway through the site. So that's about a mile and a half of walk, either adjacent to streets and detached sidewalks, and, so we fully intend to comply with all the zone code requirements, the mixed-use zone code requirements. I'll let Jim Shipton, who's my land planner, come up and talk a little bit about the on-street parking and kind of what our thoughts were on that.
Jim Shipton with Point Consulting. My address, for the record, is 8460 West Ken Carroll Avenue, Littleton, Colorado. I think Lauren had mentioned in her presentation that the right-of-way dedications along the perimeter of the project were to accommodate sidewalks and additional tree lawns on all those street frontages. So from a perimeter and, and public street part of the project, I think that has been addressed internally to the project. Can it advance this, Lauren?
Why do you want to park in those streets? With all developments over here?
Lauren had also talked about the grid network for internal access drives, and for the most part, those access drives have sidewalks immediately adjacent or nearly adjacent to those access drives. Pedestrian connectivity through the project is, has been one of the key points of our design from the very beginning, from when we started this project a few years ago. So we are trying to accommodate that throughout the project, as Bob had mentioned. You know, the total linear footage of sidewalks is near a mile and a half for the project, so. And then, on-street parking, 35th Avenue, the width is there for, with the additional right-of-way, and the new curb gutter landscape and sidewalk on the north side of 35th Avenue is going to allow the width to have on-street parking there. We haven't made a formal supplemental yet, so we haven't figured out exactly how that laneage and parking will work, but I believe the width there is to accommodate that on 35th Avenue.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Jim. Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing. And I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 53-2016, a resolution approving a major subdivision plat with right-of-way vacation on property-zoned mixed-use commercial, MUC, and located at the southwest corner of West 38th Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard, including 7690 West 38th Avenue, 3790 Yukon Court, 3501, 3765, and 3795 Wadsworth for the following reasons. One, City Council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 and 26-407 of the Code of Laws. Number two, the requested subdivision has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. Three, the subdivision plat has been found in compliance with Article 4 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws. Four, all agencies can provide service to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense and with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall continue to coordinate utility service with the appropriate agencies, and any updated information regarding utility easement shall be reflected on the plat prior to recordation. Number two, the access note on the cover sheet shall be modified to clarify that sidewalks are available for public use. Number three, the applicant shall enter into a subdivision improvement agreement with required security prior to recordation of the subdivision plat. Second? Motion carries seven to zero.
Just one real quick reminder and update, that we have closed on the Fruitdale property with HEI, and I think Mr. Lucilio is going to give an update on some of the finances. But as a reminder, there is a celebration this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. if you can make it at the rec center. And we're going to start there, and then, if you'd like, you can come over to the Fruitdale Building shortly afterwards for some photos, photo ops. So we're excited to have that one moving forward.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick. I know some of you have engagement at Wheat Ridge High School. So I passed out this total funds report, which is on your desk, on the dais. Back in January, when council started talking about the Fruitdale project, we started compiling funds, and that's the Fruitdale liquid account, and right now it's at 1.9 million. We started compiling those funds in anticipation of council approving the project or not. At the time, that money was liquid, and it's, as of last week, the property was closed on with HEI, and so now that money has been transferred from the City of Wheat Ridge to Citywide Bank, but we still have control of those funds, plus another 600,000 was transferred for the total of 2.5 million to Citywide Bank where HEI has their loan documents. So the good thing is, is Mr. Urban had asked a question about, well, once this money is transferred and moved around through Fruitdale, does that lower our reserve? And talking with our city auditors, it doesn't, because the funds are committed, but they're still under the jurisdiction of the City of Wheat Ridge. So as we start drawing down and doing loan withdrawals, then the, the reserve will go down, but we're not going to draw all this money at once. There'll probably be, you know, maybe one draw this year, maybe a few next year. So the 2.5 million dollars is sitting over at Citywide Bank under the jurisdiction of the City of Wheat Ridge only. And the only ones that have access to the funds is the City of Wheat Ridge, and they'll invoice the city. We will do a transfer of funds to their account as they need it. And because we have full control, it's committed, not restricted, so therefore, when we transfer the funds, it's just from one bank to the other, it doesn't affect the reserve at all. So that's, that's good news. And so, starting in January, this report will not reflect the Fruitdale funds at all anymore. I was talking to accounting today. We're going to have a subsection for the Fruitdale project, which will basically be the beginning funds and all the expenses and all the revenues that comes in with that project. It'll be like a shorter Excel spreadsheet that'll be monthly, and that'll be published with the financial monthly report. And that'll be a separate accounting of the funds. And so I'm looking forward to that in January, because it'll start in December of this year where we'll start spending money and receiving interest.
Are you saying it's sort of like parking place, but it's common as our funds as long as...
Right. Right, just moving it from one bank to another. One of the, the conditions of that transfer was that they paid us the same interest rate, and I also required that they pay all the transfer fees. So we actually got some money back, it wasn't a lot of money. But the bottom line is, because it's transfers and the funds are committed, as soon as we start drawing on it, the reserve may go down a little bit, but it shouldn't be going anywhere near 17%. And so, the question that Mr. Urban had posed, when we did talk to bond counsel, they said that dropping below our reserve could be a problem with our bond rating, but that's not going to be an issue right now, because these funds are not going to be drawn on in that way, so. And then the last thing, I just wanted to thank the council members who have donated to the Wheat Ridge High School this year, the career exploration class, and the special education department, Councilmembers Duran, Hoppy, Pond, and Ms. Wooden. Over the course of the year, they've donated funds to the account, and that's that, the funds pay for the coffee shop and the supplies inventory, and then field trips and bus passes. So thank you for those contributions this year from your public outreach.
Other than to tell you on the Fruitdale closing, there was a three-hour closing last Friday. It was a complicated transaction, as you might imagine, six different loans, and so six promissory notes, and six deeds of trust, and three closing instruction letters from every lawyer involved in the transaction. But the main point I want to make is that, leading up to that, it was an easy closing in the sense that there was a lot to do, but, but we had figured it out, and both Ken Johnson and Lauren, Lauren Miklech really, you know, sort of went to school on that and developed the expertise in a way on a kind of an interesting commercial project that, that mightily assisted me. They did so much of the work that it really made the closing kind of teed up a lot easier. And with things like that, there's always kind of one, more than one wrinkle at the last minute that someone writes in from a given bank and says, well, no, everything has to go backwards and upside down because of this. And Lauren and Ken kept fielding those grounders, is the best way to describe it, I think, to allow us to, to be in a really well-organized position then when we did go to closing. And I appreciated very much their, their work. She's right over there. That's all, thanks.
I just wanted to kind of announce, I have two sets of Colorado revised statutes, one from 2014, and then also from 2015. And if you want them, if there's anybody out there in TV land that wants them, if you know of a budding law student, books aren't the big thing these days, but sometime
you know of a budding law student, books aren't the big thing these days, but sometimes it is nice to have a hard copy. So if anybody knows of anybody that would like those, just give me a call and we can, they're in boxes, it's no big deal. Just ready to give them away rather than end up in the landfill.
Not tonight, thank you.
I just want to see how happy I am to see Fruitdale come to fruition. It's been a long and difficult... Yeah. They're getting after me for saying fruition and not... Yeah, fruition. I know how hard it's been for you guys because it is a very complicated deal. So I'm really happy to see that done. And I'm happy to take one more step at 38th and Wadsworth.
Nothing, thank you. Mr. Farn?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Lucio?
I'm good, thank you.
Yes, I'd just like to remind everybody that on December 22nd, Thursday, from 6:00 to 7:30 at 6690 West 38th Avenue, The Gathering Spot, I'll be having an information and cookie exchange. City Treasurer D'Etulio will be there to answer any questions about finances that anybody will have for that. And so I hope that you'll join me there, bring some cookies and take home some. I also want to let you know that I don't have a voice because this last weekend was the Chassa School State, the Colorado State Spirit Competition. And I'll let you know that our Wheat Ridge High School cheerleaders took fourth out of 35 4A schools. And our Wheat Ridge Poms team took first and are state champions in the spirit competition. And so us parents brought a lot of spirit to that competition, and so I'm kind of suffering. But I hope everybody has a great week. Thank you.
Yes, I have a few things. I'll try and make it quick. First, I wanted to get a consensus to direct our city manager, Patrick Goff, to provide the funds, I think it's $2,700 for the banner for the Wheat Ridge Garden Tour. If I can start getting a consensus with that?
A consensus?
Mm-hmm. To be taken out of this year's budget, to clarify. Yes, 2016. Are we good with that? Okay, let me move on to the next thing. The other thing I wanted to say is the Wheat Ridge Business Association had auctioned off artificial Christmas trees that were fully decorated, and the funds went to the Ralston House. I had won a bid on one of those trees, and I wanted to thank Treasurer D'Etulio, who's also a schoolteacher at Wheat Ridge High School, for helping me find a family and a student there that found a home for this Christmas tree. So I wanted to thank you. Also, I wanted to mention regarding the retreat, I hope we can find a location in Wheat Ridge to have it. I would support having it here in our hometown with our citizens to have that retreat instead of going elsewhere. And let me see here, I think that is about it. Thank you so much.
Public invitation goes out as far as board and commission appointments. And so it's like open, available to anybody who wishes to apply. And then if it's a mayor appointment, and in this case, there's only one person who applied, then I go ahead and make that appointment. We can discuss it further, but there is no way anything that's at all backdoorish or under the table or anything like that.
Didn't mean to imply, I didn't mean to this just to be limited to just the mayoral appointments, but also our own council appointments. Every appointment that the council and the city makes, I would just like to see us review those procedures and make them a little more transparent.
We're always glad to do that. I believe that's it for tonight. Meeting's adjourned.